So hello. I, so I suggest, if it's all right with you, that we talk first about the platform. And I, I actually am ready to share Juliet's. Email if you want me to do that.
Yeah.
Sure.
There, can you see it? Now I can't see.
Oh, yeah.
You don't need to see us.
You're right, you're right. Conference calls for decades.
Yep.
So I looked, I brought all these up yesterday and have an opinion, but. Do either of you have an opinion at this point, or should I open them one by one so we can look at them?
Let's discuss them because, you know, they all have their. Pluses and minuses and.
Yeah.
Fine. Let's, in lieu of taking actual minutes, could we all just each just take notes? I don't. Before we quiet to have minutes, I'm going to decide we didn't know that. If that's all right.
Fine.
Oh, I need access to look at Google Maps.
Yes, that was a problem with that one.
Okay, fine.
You access to the thing. I did send the link which should be.
We can look at your Google. Let's do the Google map last because we can open yours. Okay. So here we are at. Oh, this is WordPress, which Judy adores, right? Isn't this the thing Judy likes?
I think she used it, yes.
The Historical Society website has it. I don't know if she adores it, but it's available and accessible.
Right. Every time Judy tells me I can do something easily, my brain shuts down. So. Should I?
Look easy, but.
Right.
To be difficult.
Right. Should I click through this?
Yeah.
Why not? I mean, I've looked at this one, but this is fine.
So you want to talk about just the. Aspects of the mapping in these sites? Is that what we're talking about? Yeah.
I guess so, because is your point that we, that the way the text is set up is probably a separate issue? Than the map?
Well, I think, I think what kind of map and where does it come from is, is a.
Right.
Important question to solve for, I mean, to me. Design wise. You know, regardless of whatever your content is. You know, what, what the map looks like and what it, how it's built and how it's presented. We should control that and there are, there are better and worse ways to do it.
Well, in that case, should we look at the historic maps that are available? Or, or not?
Well.
The, the modern ones, so they're not.
Well, it just, it just seems to me. That we need an amalgam, you know, we need to make our own map. I, I just, I keep coming back to that. It's not the easiest thing to do. But, you know, the, the Google Maps and all the satellite or aerial photography. Have details in them that maybe we don't need. Or aren't detailed enough because, you know, half of Whately just looks like a million trees and nothing there.
Yeah.
And the historic maps, of course, are historic, so they contain things that aren't there anymore or aren't accurate or.
Roads that haven't been built. The spelling has changed.
No, they're missing roads that haven't been built yet. And, you know, I mean, they're interesting, but I don't think for, for the kind of thing you're presenting, which is to help people think about the landscape as it is now and the things you can't see that, that that's useful. Seems like, seems like you might want to bring in an element of an historic map in certain situations, like you're talking about so-and-so's house that used to be there and you could show the detail from the Beers, you know, map that shows the house really was there, but I don't think the whole map of the whole town is what we want.
And from, and a lot of the maps also require people to pay to have good stuff added to them. So, or if they didn't, if they didn't pay, they might not have got their name on, their house might be located or there might be something on it, but there's not a lot of detail. So there, for the purposes of the time, they were fine. But for our purposes, I'm not sure they're all that. All that helpful.
Well, they also have people's names on them, which would be distracting and confusing to the modern.
Yeah.
Viewer.
Right, especially since they're all Dickinson, Sanderson, and Bardwell.
Pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah.
There are many houses with those names. So.
So. Yeah. No, they're a supplement for what we have. I'm not quite sure how to use it yet.
Do you guys, do you guys feel reluctant to create our own map? Does that seem?
I have no, I have no idea how to do that.
I do.
If you, you know, if, if you will make a map, I say, great.
Well, the advantage, I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to do it because it doesn't seem like it needs to be that complicated to me. I don't think we need every topo contour. I don't think, you know.
Right. And we might not.
We don't need to show every building. We don't, you know. Right?
I agree. And if, if we're, if all of our. Features are by definition historic. We don't need to show the names of every street and cul-de-sac in John Robleski's. You know, subdivision or Mitchowski circle, or, I mean, sorry, I don't want to. Take pot shots, but you know.
But the fact is, there aren't that many streets in this town. I mean, there just aren't. So it's not that hard.
And we have the locations of the boundaries of the town. We have the geographic locations of everything.
Do, you're, you're.
Primary what we need.
I was kind of astonished, Alice, Alan, again, that you, there are so many cornerstones. That seem. Very close to one another.
Want them every year, but they don't give them up.
Yeah. But even, so, so we make a map. That was the royal way.
Yeah.
And, but we still need one of the, something like one of these. Platforms, don't we, in order to?
You, you create it as a, as a file, a JPG or whatever it is. I mean, you'd need, you'd need that whether, wherever your map is coming from, it's a file that's imported into this. Software.
Yeah, we still have the software. Okay.
Right.
That sounds simple. That sounds great.
It's just a picture is what it is. And then, and then you're, you're putting coordinates on top of the picture that are going to reveal your specific information. And you could, depending on what our layers are, and that's another thing to discuss, right? You might want to slightly alter the map, I guess. I don't know.
You mean if our layers were, just for example, I'm not proposing this, by century?
Could be.
The map might add streets.
Right. Or reservoirs, you know, or, right, there were no reservoirs in 1771.
Right.
So. No Y91, no, you know, all of that kind of major, no railroad, you know, the railroads came, that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And for the roads. Lynn, I had forgotten this, that last fall Lynn loaned me this massive notebook. From a project that got started but was never quite completed. I mean, during Lynn's tenure as town clerk, but long enough ago that the notebook had what we called floppy disks in it.
Oh, yeah.
A little hard disk.
What, what my people call floppy disks?
Unfloppy floppy disks. And it is full of incredible detail about the history of individual roads. It, it's, it is not indexed. I mean, for me to pull out the stuff I did about Mother George Road, I just sat and paged through it. It was, you know, endless. But it does have information. It might have some index, in fact. I've forgotten.
Well, we can make the artwork, you know, be, the, the value of customizing it is that it will work for exactly what it is we're trying to say. And can be added to or, you know. Changed in the future if that's what needs to happen. If a meteorite lands and knocks out West Whately, you know, we can change our map, you know, and scrub them out.
Right. It's so funny that you say that because I was just thinking about neighborhoods because of course. In the 18th and I think early 19th century. There were neighborhoods like Egypt and the Straits.
Yeah.
And ones, ones I don't know about. And I don't know when East Whately, West Whately became. When that terminology was used.
That may be a state of mind, Donna. That may not be a moment in, you know, a moment on a calendar.
Yeah. Right, but I think you could at least start by looking at the crafts and cane.
Yeah.
Histories and just do a find and see when the phrases started being used. So, you know, this is. Okay.
The last survey did describe a lot of neighborhoods that might have existed around the turn of the 19th, 20th century, somewhere in there. I don't know how old they are. A lot of the names seem to be pretty late 1800s. Yeah, 1800s.
Well, Egypt and the Straits definitely shows up in 18th century. Makes sense. In 1700s. And then, of course, before that, you'd have to go to Hatfield.
Yeah.
You know, some of the neighborhoods appropriated from Hatfield. They, they pre-existed. Yeah. Okay, okay. So with that, should we look at the different platforms?
Yeah, well, that's, we need to do that eventually, sure.
Yeah.
All right, so here we are. This is the. Whatever it's called.
WordPress one, yeah.
Excuse me. And, oh, I see, and there's the map part of it. I don't know if it's the execution or the actual program, but I find the blurred out stuff. I, I just think this is really hard to read.
Well, they put gray type on top of gray background. That's not very legible. But doesn't have to be that way.
It's better than white title.
And sharper.
It could be made, I mean, the legibility thing, that's a design. That's not the platform. That's the designer.
Okay, I understand. I don't know. One of the things that this doesn't seem to allow. And I. I, I don't know if it does, but it doesn't seem to. When I was just playing yesterday with the one little tiny piece of work I was doing, I was thinking, well, some of the links will be to a photograph. Or, or a clip from text, but some of them might be to another entry. And I couldn't see that this one would let you flip to another entry. But I don't know if it's the example or the way I looked at it, you know.
Well, this shows you one formatting way to have an overarching statement, you know, about what your layer might be. You know, that's one of the things we need to discuss is how to separate, how to present this information. So whether it's by century or by event or by color, you know, whatever it is. This lets you write, write and present an introduction that's adjacent to your map.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're going to need that, I think.
Yeah.
We're just titling things with just a title that says, cornerstones.
Yeah.
Right.
The end.
So another thing I didn't like about this, and again, I don't know if it's this execution of the program. I hated that you have to use the scroll bar to see the whole page.
Yeah, yeah.
I just think that's really sloppy.
Yeah.
So, okay, I'm going to go to another one.
They'll go to another one.
Oh, shoot, wait. How do I go to another one? I have to go back. Here we go, right. Okay, 98 Joseph Tree explores me.
This is the canoe trip.
Yeah.
This has the same thing, you know, the. The other thing that's not, I hate about this kind of design is that as a, as a user, if you want to print something from a page, you sometimes you can't print it though because.
Right.
Beyond the, the viewport, so.
Okay, let's see what else we do. I, I like the, I like the way it enlarged the section.
It shows you the journal entry for that. Oh, interesting.
Right, I.
Yeah.
Yes, there's the journal entry. Which is his map, right?
Yeah.
Flip map, oh dear, flip map is what it sounds like.
Yep.
Okay, I can't figure out how to go back. Close. Right? Do you want to keep looking at more of them?
Yeah, keep going.
A, a lot of them seem to require sort of proprietary. Program behind them, that you have to ask permission to use. That was the case with the Urban Archive one, probably with this one as well. Not sure how much, and this may be public domain stuff, but I'm not sure how we get at it to the math impression of the the owners of the sites.
I don't know. Here's, so here's a layers option. Oh. So that's two different maps. Allison, did you see me, did you see me switch the layers of the map?
No, I'm sorry. I had to get up and turn the power on to recharge my computer. I missed it.
Okay, so here's the historic one. I just found this thing and then present.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh. Go back. Huh. Really? That doesn't seem to jive, does it?
Um, it seems like a lot of water has dried up.
They're not to scale or something.
They're not the same scale.
Something, something's very confusing about that.
Yes, that's.
I think that's.
But again, that's.
Yeah.
That's very strange, isn't it?
Yeah, well, let's not spend our time trying to reconcile that. Let's just chalk that up. It's confusing.
Now, is the, sorry, did the text change when I changed that? Yes, it did, didn't it? Yes, it did. I'm so distracted by the slider bar.
Well, you know.
Care about the solid.
That one looks.
No, but, but. It, it kind of reinforces this idea that there can be too much to say, you know, and right, depending on what your platform is, you may not want to make people work that hard to get through it all.
Right, right, right. Agreed.
Yeah, they're trying to do a lot here. They, they got a lot going on. I like the journal entry because he's showing practically the scale.
Yeah.
Drawings are so nice, you know. Okay, so that was.
Joseph Tree.
This is Urban Archive. Which is obviously paying for itself in part with advertisements.
Yeah.
And representing a really complex environment.
Well, the fact that the example she sent us is Manhattan.
Yeah. Yeah.
Five examples that are available in this platform, so.
So I went.
Where you have to ask permission to use the software behind it. I'm not quite sure what that is.
Where, where did you see that, Alan?
Somewhere in the, there was a help. Well.
In Urban Archive, because I.
In the about.
I want to go to the urban.
You download their software to view things, but not so much to create it. They, they create stuff.
So that's very interesting because I, I liked Urban Archive and I went and looked at their software. And, and they just, so I'm going to try to find it because they describe themselves as free.
Yeah, I mean, I've got their iOS app, the, they have an Apple app, I think. And this probably web thing somewhere behind it.
Okay, now this is, this is frustrating because yesterday I found. Now, I mean, I'm just bringing up the same thing, obviously. Yesterday I found an actual description. Which I assume I did the same way I just tried to do. No, that is no good. Some projects. Here we go again with Manhattan.
Yeah, they've got five different places. New York City, Albany, New York, Augen, Utah, New, Newbury, New York, and somewhere in Columbia. All of which are map based.
Columbia, like you're here, okay, here's what I found. Now I've got it. Sorry. I, about, I think it would be in about. I read all about the five or six people who run this thing. Yes, Cali, Columbia. I think this was it. Urban Archives map is made up of purple and gray location dots. I found that it is free. But.
But they will be.
Pardon?
It may well be.
But that they sell services, like training on how to use it. And there was, I, I'm really sorry that I didn't keep this. So I thought, I found this so easily yesterday. It's $250 for them to train, train a group of people how to use their platform. And I will just ask you to take that on faith. Rather than continuing to screw around with their website. Photographs are sourced from digital collections. Okay, well, that's fine. I guess the question is if they are really designed to work with city maps, are they correct for us?
Well, it's a little distracting that it's a city map because it, to me, that it's so different from what we're talking about.
Right.
But, but you can kind of put your. My, can't see it on the screen now, of course, but.
I'm sorry, I will find.
What it does do is it, it gives you that total bird's eye, straight down view of the geography.
Right.
You know, with the street system and water and, you know, which is, we have that too, just not so much.
Lot less detail for us, which might be useful.
Yeah, you know, but I can imagine this working for us. We'd get the whole town probably on, into this frame at this scale.
Yeah, well, the whole town is 20 square miles and I can't remember. I used to know with the size of Manhattan. It's bigger than 20 square miles.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lower Manhattan is probably 20 square miles because that's just.
But, you know, when I, when I look at this, what I see is they've used very subtle colors to shade public parks versus water features. I don't understand why some things are dark and some things are paler, but it must mean something. Those are high, those are things that, that are active.
Yeah. Or.
They have photographs of them or something, yeah.
Worse instead of better, sorry.
You're going to make me throw up.
I was going to say, how do we get through this project without murdering each other?
Whereby, how upset it makes our viewers.
You know, but it's, 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 it's an attractive presentation of that. And it's your, they create, so they created this sort of washed out palette, which is interesting. And then, and then the highlights really jump because you got a bright red dot that, that lights up for you when you hit it.
Right, and somewhere you had purple too. Oh, the Cosmopolitan Club. I used to stay there.
But you see that Central Park is green and there's some other green spaces that must be public land, you know, it means something.
Right, right. Oh, there is the purple.
But there's no, there's no topography indicated on here, and that's a question for us, whether we want to somehow indicate hills. And we might.
Or lands.
And how do we do that, you know?
I'm thinking that after we go through these, that maybe we should divide up the ones that we think might have potential for us and one of us should contact each of them.
Yeah.
The questions we have. Does that make sense?
Like, yeah.
Okay, Urban Archive. And we don't know this, the other one, the main one, sorry, here it is. I left it up. I, didn't Juliet tell us she designed this?
Yeah, she had something to do with this.
So she's, okay.
I believe, I believe she did, yeah. That's how she knew about it because otherwise it's kind of an obscure.
Right, right. And you, and we can't see what the platform is, I believe. There's something. Here it is. The platform is OpenStreetMap.
Okay.
For, for a site that has absolutely no streets.
Right.
Well, very few anyway, yeah.
John Treat, he didn't travel on any streets. He just.
There are open street maps for Whately, so.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's a public source thing. It's worldwide.
Yes, I'm reading about this. I'm reading about what you said.
That would be interesting. That would be interesting to see.
Okay. OpenStreetMap.org. Okay.
Yeah.
Back to the.
They're one of the possibilities, actually.
Yes, I think they are. History pin, I think I may also have liked this one. Although I hate their logo. Just like.
Yeah.
Oh, funny. I wonder how that happened.
I've, I've already subjected Allison.
The meeting, everybody sat around and just, and decided that that's the color they're going to use, huh?
You mean that.
Magenta, rose, whatever, whatever. It, there, it must be a story behind that somehow.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe this is the one I'm remembering that is free.
It looks like it's based on Google Maps, but.
It does.
Should we go to About for a moment, just to see?
Sure.
This is the one, I'm sorry, this is the one that's free. I now remember this.
Okay.
Where did I get, what, what I? Okay. Should I scroll down slightly?
Yeah, they have a services list, so that they will.
We should go to that after we've looked at this and. Okay. Services list. Where the hell is it?
There it is.
I love that click the same thing twice approach. For God's sakes. Advanced project.
See, I wonder if you're stuck with their map art system, whatever that is.
Yeah.
And can't, I want, and, and I wonder.
Right. This must be what I was, what I remembered as a training session for $250. This must be what I was what I remembered as a training session for $250. Um. Okay, I'm going to go back to their map, okay? But they so they are designed, you know, the cultural organizations are there, which I guess we are. Are there.
It just the this makes me crazy. This this map. It looks like someone. Took the Scrabble Scrabble game and dumped the letters out on the on the table to me.
Yeah.
It's the subway map. It's crazy making.
Subway map. That's what it is.
Well, yes and no. It's got a FedEx office and.
The subway map has lots of stuff on it online.
Yeah.
Yeah, but maybe you're right. Maybe it also has this Google stuff because why are they giving us restaurants?
Well, it's got, see, the type is outlined in white. It's it's just, it's not, it's not very. Clean. It's really, it looks like the flyer from Stop and Shop Easter Specials or something.
You like it that much?
I like it that much, yeah. Huh?
I don't even I don't even know how I just did what.
You hit the. So you're you're they want you to find those green circles on there, but see, you you couldn't even tell that that was what you're hunting for.
Right.
Yeah, this, so I there it is, yeah, one.
See? It's like an Easter egg hunt.
This is for a modern audience that likes just goofing around, right?
I guess.
Oh.
Oh, well.
Got a couple of number twos. What does that mean?
The two train and the three train.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, I guess it's the same street.
It's the same same stop.
But see, I can't find stuff because I'm too I'm too distracted by the Chipotle Grill.
Yeah.
And Starbucks.
Well, actually, these aren't real restaurants. They're all chains. But so many of them are probably closed and doctor's offices. These are people who paid to have.
Yes, right, exactly. Well, you know, we could do that, too. We could subsidize our site by putting your Whately businesses on it.
Toms. Okay, are we are we? Keeping history pin on the list of things we're exploring?
Well, there may be other reasons you find this site. Useful, I you know, I can't get I just can't get what happened there.
I thought and made a big mess.
That's interesting.
What I did was.
Pins exploded.
What does that mean?
I think.
See, this is this is a flunk. If we have to sit here and go, what does that even mean? That's not a good sign.
All right.
Want to look more closely at it, but right now, I don't know.
Okay, I I don't know whether we're looking at history pin or not. I'm. A thought company.
Oh, that's an overlay device, I see.
Okay.
Is that something we should be looking at?
I don't know.
Maybe.
Historic Mapworks. Scotland Historic Mapworks.
So do they? Do they provide the service then? Is that the? Ah, yes, it's a cart.
Residential genealogy. Well, this is in point for type.
Well, this is like a separate thing. If you wanted to create a an element that showed the generations of Whately maps kind of. Overlaying each other to express. Some kind of development or change or whatever. I'm not sure that's your first priority.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, folks. Some other map platforms that we didn't look at. So is there anything else we want to look at in this?
Ramsey was listed elsewhere.
What was?
Ramsey, David Ramsey Map Collection. They were listed separately, I think, on the. I'm here Ramsey. The map collection archive, I think.
He has over 120 historical historic maps. I don't, I I mean, I don't think we need other people's historic maps. If we want to use a historic map as a layer, we have the 11 maps that exist. Right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm getting this one. This is one of them. This is someone who wants to sell us one of them for $25. Oh, here, here is the Ramsey map. It's Ramsey of Manhattan. Right.
Yeah.
Did I ever tell you, either of you, that someone? In my family owned a farm on 42nd Street?
No.
This is a very, very poor side of my family, very poor. I became deeply interested in exactly where on 42nd Street. We owned property, but we don't seem to know that. If I ever go to Manhattan to do some research, I will try to figure that out. All right, where does this leave us? The the three that we hesitated on briefly are Urban Archive, Open Street Map, and History Pin, I believe.
Yeah, who? Who was behind the Open Street Map? Was that Urban Archive or was that somebody else?
No, it's the main the main map. Is Open Street Map.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you didn't like the slider feature for the. Intro information.
We don't have to use it.
Well, and as you, as you say, we don't know if. If that's a function, but the page design.
Yeah.
Didn't offer enough space for a text. We don't know whether that's a fixed feature or.
Yeah.
A design feature, right?
My guess is the design feature. It looks like there are three or four elements on the page that. Could be. Buried in size. I don't know.
So we want to know for the various sites. Whether they require that we use. Their map as a background, right?
Right.
What else do we want to know?
Well, I'm a little confused, you know, I I'm without knowing what the potential for these sites are, I'm I'm kind of going by what. These particular uses are. You know, in some ways. This setup makes sense to me for what we're doing because. It allows you to, I mean, thi- this is their artwork that Juliet made, you know, on the on the right. This doesn't have the layers we're talking about, you know, so I'm not sure how we think about. The option for how to present our layers.
Right.
You're still you're still wanting to do that, right? You're not gonna put all your dots on one map.
I don't think so. And and so it at least this iteration appears to allow a. A text linked to a pin. And one other reference point, which is this.
Visuals.
Another visual.
Yeah.
So it doesn't allow what I was imagining, which means nothing, you know, late last night for me. Which is multiple clicks to different. Yeah, so we don't know if it would allow that or not.
Right.
You want to take a look at mine to see what. How do I expand that?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not super at this screen share thing. Oh, God. All right.
Did you just send that? Because I hadn't seen that come in.
Yeah, it just came over.
Oh, I'm sorry. I haven't had a chance to look at it. Oh, cool.
So this, yeah, it's pretty minimal. Doesn't have any of my favorite spots, which is fine.
It doesn't have any what?
Any of my favorite spots, but I have lots of stuff in my own Google Maps.
Yeah.
Click on one of the balloons. You get a. You should get. Yeah, a description.
Yeah.
That's. That's what I've done so far. It starts with a spreadsheet. And I've got the geographic location to these things. And for some of them, I have a. A GPS location, which is almost always pretty much the same as the. Latitude launch that state provides, so. My GPS is mostly accurate. But it's a little crowded. I'm not sure of how much choice I have over the little blue balloons.
You mean what the pins look like?
Yeah, I think there is some control over that, but I'm not quite sure what.
Uh huh.
But this is this is the minimalist view of things.
It's interesting because there are some corners that, like this one, if I can get it to come up, that I. I didn't realize Whately went all the way to the edge of the bridge.
Oh, yes, it does. Just below the bridge, yeah. There's. So this. Sewerage treatment plant.
Oh. So this part is. Complicated, right?
Yeah. That's the Conway Deerfield lines there.
So could could you could one use? Could one do something this? Easy to look at that sat on a designed map rather than a Google map?
I don't know the answer. See, this is where you lose me because I don't know the answer to that.
I'm not sure.
I mean, technically, it should be possible, you know, I. But I don't know if that's. An easy thing.
There is a way of outlining boundaries.
Well, that's the thing that's missing from this map are the town is the town lines.
Yeah. And I think that's done, but I'm not sure exactly how. I've figured that out, but.
You think in Google Maps you can do that?
I think so. I need to figure out how to do it. I'm not exactly sure at the moment, but it could be possible.
And how in so I've only used Google. I mean, I haven't ever set anything up in Google Maps. Could you? Could you? Develop an introduction to the topic that took you to this? Or is it is this what you have?
Right, because this is the problem. You're gonna need a homepage that explains this project and what what's what the opportunities are, you know, and why you'd want to visit here. Then you're gonna need below that your sort of level, you know, your secondary level of categories, whatever they are. And within those categories, your maps and your.
Right.
Would. We could start. Sort of hierarchical page. Something like that might work in in WordPress. I'm not sure we'd even need the. The WordPress plugins that I haven't figured out how to install yet that allow you to place little dots on a map like this. This would be possible, I think, at Open Street Map as well, because they have bounded the town as well. Exactly how would. I have access to it. Do it.
Yeah. Okay. I loved your descriptions.
Direct from the. Direct from the Atlas.
From the Atlas, on the westerly edge of an old bed of a brook.
Yeah, a lot of the descriptions are from 1910 or even earlier, so.
Right.
But the town's boundaries haven't changed, I think, since the 1930s.
Really? They have changed or have not?
I don't think that the actual town boundaries have not changed since about the 1930s. It was, I forget what the reason was, is. Somewhere in the back, I had this thing.
Did you? Did you both read about the place where the boundary between Belgium and France changed by seven feet?
Yes, it did.
Because Allison, you didn't see this.
Somebody moved the boundary.
A farmer found that the granite marker was in the way of his mowing.
Sure.
So he just moved the marker and it is now an international, you know, the EU Commission is stopping everything else to deal with the boundary. It's it's really, the guy is great. I saw an interview with the guy.
I'm sure that's not the only one that's been moved either.
But it's just happened. I mean, it's 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 a really good story, and he speaks Flemish, which must make the French crazy. Um, all right. I don't know what to do now.
Right.
I I mean, I could see deciding that. Among. Open, well, so we could ask Juliet about Open Street Map, right? Or we could just call them ourselves. I could see dividing up Urban Archive, History Pin, and Open Street Map and deciding. One of us will call each of them and try to get a sense of what's impossible. And if they. I don't know what to do about Google Map. I mean, I don't know how you communicate with Google.
It's.
I don't think.
You don't directly.
No.
They provide lots of videos and instructional things to.
Right.
Let you do it all yourself, but.
Right, you can do it. It's one of those you can do anything.
We can hire somebody to help you out with it.
I mean, another thing which might be the wussy thing to do. Would be to continue talking about what we want to do and then bring Juliet back.
I don't think that's wussy at all because I think we should talk about what we want to do and then maybe she can help us find the right pair of shoes, you know, for what we want to do.
Yeah, we've got half a dozen projects, all of which seem to be based on maps somehow.
Right.
Right, maybe it's just. A simple webpage that. Points to different ways of looking at the same maps or something like that, or different maps even.
Okay, I I think that's.
What do you mean? What do you mean a half a dozen projects, Alan? What are you saying?
We we have we have hidden history projects. Mine is one. I have one.
Okay, I didn't think I thought the hidden history was the project and then we had.
Within it, there are a bunch of subtasks.
Right.
And one of them is the town boundaries. One of them is Days Rebellion Homes.
Right.
Donna has one or two.
Right, right, okay, okay.
Right. So topics really, or or.
Yeah.
Within the overall project.
Distillery or.
And that's how you see organizing this. If you're talking about your layers, you know, or your pages, that's that's your vision of how to how to present the information.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, although I do like this idea. Of, you know, assuming we get to the point where we have enough content that this would be appealing of. Clicking by century and having new things come up.
Well, or by topic, you know, for example, the. 250th anniversary of the revolution is coming up. Right? In a few years, and you might want to have a layer or a page or whatever it is that has. Those kind of relevant, and it may be the same information that's on the other already on the other pages.
Sure.
You know, and just reshuffled to be, you know, you could have a page of things that are green, you know, you could have that page. And you're just reshuffling your your cards to make a new poker hand. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yes, that makes.
I mean, part of it is is you want to think about how you're presenting this to the public because you do want people to look at this. And there's different ways of. Tidling it and. That could be more or less. Engaging.
Right, so you might have, you know, businesses in Whately. I mean, for example, you might have transportation.
Well, or you could call it, you know. Mysteries in Whately, you know what I mean? You could have, you know, Whately disasters. I don't know, you know. That's a little more. That's a little more. Yeah, I hidden history is, is kind of sexy because it sounds a little mysterious. And I think that that's engaging because you feel like you're going to find out secrets, you know, that not everybody knows.
And that came in part from our, we don't want to just do the milk bottle and the stockade monument and the pound, you know.
I, I guess I would back up even further and think, I mean, what overall is the point of this? Is it overall to try to get people to engage in history as a way of, of giving them a new perspective on where they live and the people that they live with? Is that the big picture?
Um. Yeah.
Well, if it's not, no, what, what would you say?
Well, I would say that we got bullied into this by Susan Barron, who's about the genless bully in the world. She just kept saying, can't the Historical Commission do anything for the 250th? And Alan will know this, and I said 200 times, if we do something, I want it to be something that lasts, not follow its parade.
Well, I think clearly you're thinking about it as a, as an ongoing thing that, you know, we'll add to and have new ideas for and if it's for the anniversary, shouldn't it be focused on? I don't know.
I, I don't think it's, I, I don't want it, at least myself, to be all about 1771.
I don't, we've missed the boat, if you ask me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it, it, right, as far as it being about the
This is more than the 250th now.
Right. They're trying to pretend like it's really not that 2022 is the anniversary, but you know, let's be honest. That's just not gonna, it's not gonna float.
Is it true that poor Hatfield had to have their delayed 350th parade in the pouring rain?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's actually sad.
Of course, cursed all around.
Yeah. Poor Hatfield.
They probably had fun doing it.
Yeah.
250th, not 350th, but maybe.
Well, anyway, you know. Yeah, I, I, I think, I think you don't have to, I, I think you should abandon feeling bullied to do something for the 250th because it's, it's almost over.
Yeah, no, no, no. I, I have, I have. I actually think this could be interesting. And I don't, you know, who is the audience? I haven't actually thought of the audience as being Whately residents exclusively.
Well, no, I, I don't mean that, but you know.
Collection, yeah.
I, I, I think it might help inform some of our decisions if we can keep clear in front of us. What's the greater, why are we investing our time in this? What's the greater good that's supposed to come out of this besides Susan will shut up and stop bothering you?
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry, I didn't really, I wasn't being serious about that.
No, but you know what I mean? There's, there's got to be a bigger picture.
Right, right. Um. Right. And, and the, the bigger picture, picture is partly some pride in the town's history, I think. It might be a wish to have more residents of the town understand a little bit of its history. And I guess I'm thinking more about people who move here. Well, I don't know. I mean, the people who, whose families have lived here forever might not know much about it.
I don't think they're any more likely to know about it than anybody else.
You're right. I think you're right.
They're all pretty much equal. They're like. Making their own stories about the town.
Yeah.
Alan, I don't know if you've heard Allison's story about mentioning that it would be interesting to have a program about slavery in Whately. You know, as one of a number of programs and was it Keith, was it Keith Allison who said?
He says, I think most people just think that's something that happened in the South.
Right. And I think he was, he was accurate.
Probably true. But there, there probably were slaves in town.
Oh, there were. There absolutely, we know there were. So any, that's a whole nother story.
No, but to your point that it's not just about new residents. So I think
Yeah, we, we might even want to contact the Nalibika people to find out a bit more about their native history, which
So maybe.
But that's.
Right. So maybe another thing we should do besides bringing Juliet back and I, unless if, if one of you wants to do this, I'm perfectly happy, but I would be willing to take a stab at putting together notes for Juliet based on the conversation we've had that we have had, the three of us just now, and run them past you both.
Yeah.
You know, for editing. Because I, I don't want to, I don't want to bring her back and start at the beginning.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. I think, I think we can have a better conversation with her now that we've looked at some of these things and, but.
Right.
And you have enough material that you feel like you could start this, this ship, you know, off, out of the dock here.
Right. Because the other thing I was going to suggest is that we have that initial really rough list of possible topics.
Yeah. Get that together.
I think having each, I don't think we're going to get anything from Susan or Judy on this. And I don't mean that negatively. I think it's just a fact that I think sharing that again and having each of us say, you know, between now and a year from now, I'm sure I could draft something, you know, for your improvement on these topics and see what they look like. I think that might help us. I'm, I'm really repeating what you said, Allison, having some a, a more specific sense of the topics we think we would address might help us think about organizational structure, at least as a start. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think having a better sense of kind of what, what, what the overall purpose and who, you know, why you're trying to reach people will help you make choices about what topics you might pursue or what you feel like is missing or.
Right. Okay. Um. So I will draft something up and, and send it to both of you.
Okay.
And we've talked about Alan's a little bit. It's new. Do you want to talk about what I sent you or not?
About Mother George, you mean?
About Mother George. I can't find it.
It was in the bottom of my email.
I might have already moved it to hidden history. There it is.
I've downloaded your document yet.
Please move this window away from the shared application. What the hell does that mean?
We just see a blank gray square. Now we're gray.
I'm so, oh, oh, oh. Sorry. Can you see what I just brought up?
Nope, it's gray.
Oh crap. I hate Zoom. I can't wait until we can sit around a table.
Part of the hidden history here.
Yeah. Hang on.
Hang on.
I'm really sick of this silliness.
And I can bring up my own copy of it, I think.
I see yours now.
You know what I learned yesterday? Did I, were either of you told years and years ago that Corderoy is an anglicization of Cour du Hua, the Road of the King?
I've heard it.
Yes, I've heard that.
Well, I checked with Merriam-Webster and it is a fantastic notion. That's what Merriam-Webster said.
Okay.
So I was thinking, as you, as I've already said, of a text that had embedded links to images. So a different, I mean, the interesting thing to me is not whether this is good or not, because you can tell me some other time, but that you and I were thinking of a different shape, Alan, to our materials.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, this could work too, is, you know, homepage with a, a link to your document, which has embedded links. Not that different than what I was thinking about, I don't think.
Right.
Links to photographs and all the rest of it. It doesn't all have to go to a map. Because Mother George Road is hard to put in the map because it doesn't really exist anymore.
No, that's why we're making our map. We need to place it on our map.
What is going on?
Good, yeah.
Have I lost you?
No.
No.
It is telling me to sign in again as the town administrator.
Our, our time is up.
A limited amount of probably.
She gave me 11, 11 to one.
Oh.
You could ignore it.
But, but you're not seeing anything now, are you?
Yeah, we're seeing your Mother George email.
You are?
Yeah.
What the heck that is?
Probably you, but.
I've seen the Mother George email, but not the text. Okay, well, we don't have to talk about the text now. Um.
Well, we have the text, you know, we can look at it in our own email.
Right. Right. Um. Did it seem generally like an okay approach? You, you may say no, it is fine.
Yeah, totally.
Fine, yeah.
Okay. Okay. There really are rocks, there really are boulders that are in a straighter line in our woods than nature would have left.
Yeah.
Um. And and it's a shame that the fort has, the fort has washed out. Just, it was there more clearly last year. Isn't that sad? Yeah. But the Gracie photograph was pretty good, I thought. So, okay, so I'm going to write up some notes. You will both improve them. Should we each try to come up with, I don't know, five topics that we would deal with in the next year? This is where.
Five more besides, besides? What do you mean topics?
Like entries.
Oh, entries. Well, there's the overarching topics like old houses, you know.
Entries, entries, yeah. This is where you and Darcy and I started about 18 months ago, isn't it, Alan?
Yeah, something like that.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm still wondering about this layer idea and how to organize entries and around a topic that is, has, you know, some kind of engagement factor for the public. And how that might be titled and how that's organized. Because, because I don't think you can have a layer with one thing in it that seems a little anemic.
Right.
And, and I think topics need to somehow.
Sorry.
That's okay.
It's someone calling to send me, sell me Medicare related services, I'm sure. Look, you can look forward to this, Allison. Am I right, Alan? Or, or the person who says, I am calling from your credit card company.
Yeah, no, I get those. I get all of them.
The old person I am trying to snooker you.
Yeah.
Locked a lot of calls.
Yeah. Um. I mean, this is, to me, this is the interesting part of, you know, this project is kind of crafting what, how the content, what the content is and how it's organized.
And what we want to tell people.
Yeah. And, you know, do we, do we link it to, you know, as I say, current events or other, other upcoming anniversary things, you know, as a way to kind of seem contemporary and current? Um.
I.
You know, there's going to be a lot of interest in that, you know, not that the American Revolution is my favorite thing. But all that's going to be, just like the bicentennial, you know, it's going to, it's going to come up. And people are going to be seeing news about it all over the place. And it may make people curious about what went on in this town.
Right. Um, and we have, we have Derica's good research on Shay's Rebellion, but I don't know how much research there is on what happened in the American Revolution here. I mean, we have in the back of the town histories, I'm waving because I have the books on my desk.
Right, yeah. We have lists and lists.
Yep. But, but I should tell you both, if you don't know this, having worked with the veterans here to make their application for CPA funding for their park fundable, to make the application fundable. In the course of that, the Historical Society has unearthed the names of over 300 servicemen between the French and Indian War and World War II who are not on the existing memorial.
Yeah.
So, so the proposal we'll vote on at town meeting includes making smaller stones to add all those names.
Addenda, addenda rocks.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, and that's actually the way apparently it's usually done.
Too, too many words.
You know what they need to be called? Glacial errata.
I, I, I mean, actually, I don't know what they're going to be called. But it's better than putting tiny little brass things on top of a bronze plaque, you know, that then fall off.
Well, see, there's different ways that, let's just take the, the revolution as an example, okay? Because there's different ways that that could be done. There's no, there's no battle sites in towns. We're not going to be doing that. But we do have lists of people who were involved in whatever ways they were involved. And, you know, some of those people can be located on a map because we know where they lived.
Oh, and, and with the, with the work Derek is doing on house histories now, they can be located much.
Yeah, and, and do we have to put them all? No, you know, we, nobody wants to know all of them. But we could find stories for half a dozen of them that are, you know, this guy went off to the Lexington alarm, you know, took him three days to walk over there, you know, stayed for two days, came home, you know. You know, some small story like that about what their particip, if we, if we can find out, this guy was at, you know, Ticonderoga, this guy was at Valley Forge. This guy deserted and ran to Canada. I don't know, you know.
I, 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 um. I have been thinking about this more as a organized more about sites and structures than about groups of people, just setting aside the Shay's Rebellion folks.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I see what you mean.
I think it's because the Historical Commission's responsibilities have to do with preservation of sites and structures.
Right.
Not about the town's history.
Right.
Which, I mean, of course they intersect. Of course they intersect.
The Historical Society's responsibility.
The Historical Society has.
Right. But you're trying to make, you're trying to make this history palatable and entertaining for the public. And that means there need to be stories. You can't just have a picture. Here's a rock. Here's its latitude and longitude. That's not enough of a story.
Right. Which is why in the one thing I've worked on with Mother George Road, I mean, the things that are interesting to me, first of all, and it took me a long time to figure this out, that the reason I couldn't find it on any of the maps is that neither of the towns ever accepted it. Which meant taking on the responsibility of keeping the road, maintaining the road, which is about 75% of the entries of town meetings. And, and the town's annual reports for a long period of time is about road maintenance.
Right, and those, and.
Really interesting.
But some of those stories are, are good. You know, I went through, what's his name? Sabina Bartlett's account book and the Historical Society has sitting on its counter. I wasn't thinking about roads, but I did notice there are entries in there where he took the day off to go work on the road crew. You know, on Pantry Road. And it's, and he got paid three shillings or whatever he got paid, you know, and that's just kind of a interesting little anecdote that people were enlisted from town to go work on roads when those were a thing that needed building. But, and that's, I think that's enough of a story.
Right. Because all you'd have to do is link to, you know.
That road.
Is the, the book you're talking about is handwritten.
Yep.
So you can have a photograph of the paint.
Right, or you could transcribe it, yep. On, on April 3rd, 1864, you know, Sabina Bartlett sent two guys, you know, down with their wooden shovels down to help dig out Pantry Road. I don't know.
You could have, and you could have a photograph of some guys working on a road. It doesn't have to be the right guy. You could have a photograph of what Pantry Road looks like.
Right, if you live in Whately, you know where Pantry Road is. And it's just kind of an interesting thing to think about.
Yeah. Yeah.
And digging and draining the swamp and all those kinds of things. He has notes about that in there too. But you can go through that whole account book with a different lens, thinking, all right, I'm looking for information about road building in town. You know, now I'm looking for information about what women did. Now I'm looking for information about apples. You know, whatever your, your filter is, there's stuff to be found there.
You're reminding me of how much time I spent going through 18th century, sorry, microfiches of 18th century pamphlets for my dissertation. And at a certain point, I decided, these are so, oh, and they were in French. They, they're so hard to read and there were so many thousands of them, I will only be looking at the ones that were pre, typeset because the handwritten ones are killing me.
Yeah.
Yes.
But anyway, we're talking about how to, how to choose future, future information and, and, and I, I guess I'm just reminding you about, you want to be able to sell this, so.
Right. So I suggest we do three things. The first I've already said, I'll write up some notes, you two will edit them. I will reach out to Juliet just because I want to get Lynn to draw another, spend a check for our second hundred dollars that we haven't spent yet.
Wild times.
Yeah, and and I think we should each do some thinking about topics or entries, excuse me, or topics and entries, now that we've defined them differently, right?
Well.
Yeah.
That's just how my brain wants to think about it. That doesn't mean.
Or, or layers, it's really layers and entries, right?
Yeah.
I, I will find a piece of paper on which I'm making notes. And.
I mean, you suggested at the beginning of the meeting, you know, a century kind of device to apply. I mean, that, that's another way to do it. You know, I don't know if that makes the best sense, but that is a way to divide the stuff up.
Right, and I bet we haven't thought at all about making any entries for the 20th century.
Yeah, but.
I bet we, I bet we would have to, yeah. Yeah.
Well, but if we were talking about road building, you might put I-91 in there. I don't know, you know, there's things that could be done.
No, there are things, and, you know, to the, if you were really doing Whately history, you'd have to use those photographs of the leading, the leaders of the town, you know, in blackface. On the.
How did that come into your mind?
Just about. Because from the time I first saw it, I was so horrified.
Yes, I've seen the Metro, the Metro Show picture.
You know, I thought I had moved to Massachusetts.
All over England too.
Exactly, and just thinking about 20th century, you know. You know.
Well, it was a mainstream entertainment device, you know, the whole genre.
It was indeed. So, and I think we should meet again. Could we meet again?
Sure.
Yeah, why not? We have a Monday or is it Historical Commission meets on Monday?
Historical Commission is meeting Monday and I'll send you the, I, I have the agenda for Amy. But that's to talk about things like preventing more tobacco barns from being torn down. Anyway.
We saw it collapsed yesterday, oh, in the way to Montague.
In. One of our barns or no?
No, it was in Montague. One of your barns, old farm out there on the road into Montague Center.
Is this from old age or a storm or?
It's like old age and a storm.
Yeah.
It's a mess.
When I, I learned from the Barnes, Historic Barnes webinar, I, I didn't listen to the whole thing, but I listened to part of it this spring, that the best way to preserve a barn, if you do nothing else, is to replace the roof with something that functions as a roof.
Yeah.
You can deal with the walls later. That was, I mean, it makes.
Yeah.
They tend to be pretty big roofs, you'll find.
Yeah, 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 of course. Yeah, no, and I'm happy because, you know, my next door neighbor has three tobacco barns. And they have, the roofs are in good shape, which is super. I am completely, next Thursday and Friday, the 10th and 11th. If those dates work for either of you.
Yeah, dur, during the day is fine, they have a meeting next Thursday night.
Friday is out for me, Donna, but, but Thursday morning would be good, 11 would be fine.
Okay, I'll ask, I'll ask Amy for another meeting, and that will, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm voting for sooner rather than later because we have a tiny bit of momentum here.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
All right, next Thursday at 10, that sounds great.
11 o'clock?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, and, thank you.